All right, thanks.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. We're returning. We've been in recess. This is Cook County Board of Commissioners today on Tuesday, June 13th. It is a little bit after four o'clock, and we are reconvening. We are on currently item number nine, which Administrator Yorki has brought up, and we've been discussing the resolution of support for capital request to Minnesota management and budget. And one of the things we discussed this morning was getting some additional information from Bruce at Ellers, and we do have Bruce on the line. Welcome, Bruce.
And, Madam Chair.
Hi, Commissioner.
Thanks again for being here, Bruce. I'm going to give a little overview of the conversation that Brady and Bruce and I had, and then Bruce can kind of chime in. So, following up on the conversation this morning, there were questions about whether we could, without saying whether we would be going with option one, two, or three, simply submitting a general application to MMB, and then determining later which of those three options we would select. In the conversation that we had with Bruce, I think there was consensus that that would not be a good way to go, because it would communicate to MMB that we really aren't ready to move this forward, which I realize does not address the uncertainty that we're feeling about how to move forward. But, one point that Bruce made was, you know, if we do say, if we do put forward a particular option, let's just say option one, and then in the interim, and we could even get to a point where we receive notification of award, if we, after that point, find out we do some additional analysis, or before then, that we determine we need less space than that option provides us, we could scale down the project and scale down the amount of the request from MMB. So, there's, we give ourselves more flexibility if we say, you know, we're going to make this larger request, recognizing that there are folks here on the dais who still have concerns, that there's additional information that we want to gather. We have time to do that, because this is a preliminary application. And we could then, later, even if we're awarded funding, we could still potentially scale back the request if that is the will of the board. The other question was whether it would be advisable to broaden the scope of the request and say, you know, not only are we doing option one, but we're doing all deferred maintenance on all county buildings. In our conversation, there was consensus too that that probably would not be a good idea, that it would diffuse the focus of the application and make MMB less inclined to award us. So, those are kind of the two key points. In terms of the resolution, I did send you all the information about, from Robert's Rules, about a motion to reconsider, so that is an option. The, let's see, my brain is kind of, it's been a long day already. So, what I would suggest, and I know there's discomfort about paragraph five, which specifically calls out the justice center idea, I think it would be totally acceptable to remove that paragraph, if there is discomfort with that, and simply pass the resolution without that. So, that's kind of a very brief summary of the conversation that we had with Bruce. And Bruce, if there's anything that you'd like to add to that, please feel free to jump in.
Sure, I just maybe a couple of points, Chair and Commissioners. The first point that James made about having the opportunity to go with a different option, I did want to just reiterate that. Let's say, you know, these cost assessments are correct, and you decide at a future junction or juncture that it makes sense to go with something more akin to option two or option three. I know from experience that the state is not going to say, "Well, wait a second. You said you needed to do the first one, and with more money coming from the state, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to give you less money." I'm certain that that won't be a complaint, and that as long as you can say, "Look, this still achieves the needs of the county," but with a different configuration or a smaller cost, that's not going to present any concerns. In addition, you know, even if you did look at option two or option three down the road and decided that was the best fit for the county, it's very possible that those options might cost more than $14 or $15 million respectively. Let's say it might be $16 million, and you'll be very glad, I think, to have asked for, you know, the state's share of a 17.4 million estimated cost, even if you end up doing a project, you know, that has a $16 million cost, for instance, due to some cost inflation. So, I think that on that front, I think James summarized it well, but I wanted to just give a little bit more context as to my thinking there. And then, relative to the second question, I'm really compelled, having worked with other counties around the state on bonding requests, by the synergy between the needs for deferred maintenance and improvements to the courthouse, the LEC, and then, to some extent, for other justice purposes, however you frame that. It's pretty much, I would say, you know, the highest and most important facilities' need that a county has, and you're going to be doing all of this other deferred maintenance at some point in time, not only here over the next five years, but that will be an ongoing campaign or need of the county to keep improving and maintaining its physical plant. And so, I think in terms of putting your best foot forward, that is a compelling project, and it's not going to look like you're just shooting for everything and hoping to, you know, get whatever you can. It seems very strategic and very purposeful, and also demonstrating that you're willing to put your own skin in the game for both this project, in whatever shape it takes, but also for other capital needs of the county. And the other last thing I would just note on that front is, as you know from our conversation a few weeks ago, I have been working with James and Brady on an update to the financial management plan, and while I know we're going to be having a discussion about that at a later date, later this month, you know, our findings and our analysis are still very much on track with the idea that you do have the capacity to undertake the deferred maintenance and, let's say, half of a $17.4 million project. And we'll get into more details on that later this month, but I did want to just reiterate that for you as well.
Thanks, Bruce.
Are there any questions that Commissioners have for Bruce? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really, I'm with you 100%. The only thing was, is, I mean, I did bring that question forward about the everything, but when it came down to it, I was most interested in kind of the big five. And Bruce, you feel like the courthouse, the Y, the law enforcement, community center, and the highway department buildings, that's a little too broad and a tougher sell?
Yeah, Commissioner Mills, that's a really good question, and I can't tell you definitively that you would be setting yourself up for denial on that. You know, those are, it makes sense, if you want to take a broader approach, it certainly makes sense to keep it to a somewhat smaller list. I would probably maybe whittle it down further, to some extent, if you can, if the board wanted to go in that direction. You know, it's just, I know from talking with other counties and other cities and so on, that this pool is going to be very much oversubscribed.
I'm sorry?
And I think a lot of, a lot of counties are frankly hoping to get lucky and include a number of projects. And, you know, it just strikes me that you're going to have your best shot at having a really laser-focused focus on the courthouse, LEC, and justice purposes, and not add highway or community center or the Y. But, you know, I guess I can't tell you that, oh, that would be reckless or inappropriate to do. It just is sort of playing the odds, if you will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
When you said "pool," I had "Y" on the brain, so then I was like, "Wait, what?" But then it was the pool of the bonding.
Apples. Do other Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Hawkins.
Yes, I'm wondering about our resolution, and the suggestion has been made, taking out the fifth whereas, where we specifically spell out that we are proposing a justice center. What are your opinions on that?
Commissioner, are you asking me about that?
Yes, sorry. Yes, I am, sorry.
I can't, I can't see you.
Yeah, I forget that.
So, you know, I, you all are very familiar with the differences between options one, two, and three, or A, B, and C, and what the names mean to you, but that's not going to really mean anything to the folks at the state. So, I think the resolution does a nice job of sort of hinting at the intent of, again, pitching an idea for these purposes, and really focusing on the functionality and the uses, more than the nomenclature of a justice center per se. So, I'm really going to trust you and, of course, Commissioner Yorki on this to, you know, but the resolution itself isn't gospel, or isn't going to be crucial as to the words you use. It's really going to be making that argument, or that presenting that narrative case for the need for improvements, you know, for efficiency, for workflow, for the next 20, 30, 40 years, for safety and wellness of everyone involved. And I guess that's what I think is really going to win the day for you, and so I'm pretty agnostic on whether or not you call it a justice center or not.
Thank you for that, because that is a concern that was brought up in terms of our thinking and where we are with the process. It really may make a significant difference.
Yeah, and I think you're presenting the needs effectively outside of getting into the weeds of which exact option you're looking at.
Okay. Commissioner White, did you have a question?
So, Administrator Yorki, what would that, number five on the resolution, how would that read?
It would be eliminated, wouldn't it?
Would it just be totally eliminated?
Yeah, I don't have a poll.
As it reads, it says, "The capital improved," this is the fifth paragraph, "the capital improvement plan proposes to convert the law enforcement center to a justice center through the addition of new space that would include a courtroom, office spaces for court administration, probation, and the county attorney, meeting spaces for attorneys and clients, and a new office, evidence, storage, and processing space for the sheriff's office, and a new Sally port for transporting inmates in and out of the facility." So, if we just ax that whole thing, oh, go ahead, no, yeah, no, no, no.
But then that affects the next whereas. I'm reading again.
It could just say "the improvements."
Right.
Instead, "these."
But you are, even if you eliminate that fifth paragraph, the paragraph before still leads into that paragraph.
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Look at that, how that reads together.
I'm sorry?
It's like that paragraph five never should have been there in the first place.
Right, because four really explains it.
One, or, I mean, we could just eliminate "to convert the law enforcement center to a justice center through," yeah.
I think what we're trying to do, though, is eliminate the term "justice center," because we aren't that far.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, is just eliminate "proposes to," no, "proposes to," okay, so just eliminate "to convert the law enforcement center to a justice center through."
Yeah.
And then, so for, paragraph five stays there, and it would read, "whereas the capital improvement plan proposes the addition of new space that would include a courtroom, office spaces for court administration," no, I don't know if that makes sense.
So, here's what I thought earlier. Strike, "convert the law enforcement center to a justice center through the addition of," and just add, "reconfigure and add new space."
There you go. Except for, yeah, or we could just eliminate the whole thing.
Or eliminate the entire paragraph.
Yeah, we're just waiting for you, Bob.
We're in a meeting, we're in a board meeting right now.
You're on camera.
The local canines are supportive of.
Public comment period is up first.
Yeah. So, you're saying fourth and sixth flow together well?
Yes.
But, six says, "reducing risk and staff time associated with transporting inmates between buildings." I mean, maybe that will happen, maybe it won't, but I don't know if it really matters. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I wrote, I wrote this with the expectation that option one would be, you know, what we submit to MMB, and I felt it important to include those details.
And, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I would agree with that. You know, I don't want to suggest getting too creative in our writing, in terms of stretching what you think will actually happen, but that's really a huge issue for a lot of counties, as I'm sure you all know from discussions at AMC and so on. And so, I think just talking, even in broad terms, about some of the core guiding principles of what you're trying to accomplish, I think makes a lot of sense, and that would be fleshed out more in the application.
Thank you. Other questions for Bruce?
Just really appreciate your perspective, Bruce. Thank you for taking the time.
Absolutely.
So, this is Commissioner White. So, for clarification, because we as a board have not fully explored or discussed all the aspects of the capital improvement plan, and there is, seems to be great understanding and community support for investing in current buildings and for the law enforcement improvements, but there's a lot of unknowns out there yet about, and questions about doing a full-scale, a full-scale justice center, and we just need more time, and so I, if we can seek the dollars without committing ourselves to that particular construction, I mean, it's like, then that would be acceptable. And are you certain that there will not be offense if money is handed, if money is awarded, and then we come back and say, "Oh, we were just kidding, we don't need this much"? Does anyone take offense on that? Because there will be counties that will...
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I can jump in, I wouldn't say it's a matter of, you're saying, "We're just kidding." I really think you could present a credible argument or just narrative to explain that, you know, from this point forward, you're going to continue to, you will have continued to evaluate your needs, really looking at, you know, near-term needs, but also its future, future of workforce, future of detention, future of all these things. And as I know Administrator Yorki has mentioned before, you know, you have the ability to refine your application between now and this fall, I think it's October, but then also, again, I would say you absolutely would have the ability to present a different scope, even after you are awarded, or if you were awarded. I think it would be better to get it figured out between now and the fall, so you're not, you know, making a change after a prospective award, but it's not like you are locking yourself in stone, you know, here on June 13th. So, I would feel very comfortable if I were in your shoes, you know, moving forward with this game plan, this strategy, but knowing that there's room for future discussion, future analysis, and a possible revision in the scope by sometime this fall. Does that help?
Yes.
Yes. So, given our discussion and the input from Bruce, as I'm looking at our current resolution, if we eliminated the term "justice center" and eliminated paragraph six, that would give us flexibility, in my mind.
And so, if we secured those dollars, and then decided after the monies were in hand, as Commissioner Mills said about, however you term that so well, about providing space and, you know, functionality, that statement would apply to a lot of the different buildings that we have. I mean, and I'm only talking about, like, three buildings, we're talking about, about It's talking about, no, I totally lost it. So, is that, is that a possibility, to then use dollars to, it's really hard to stay focused on this. If somebody's, is it really a dog?
Oh, that's my dog, just kidding.
No, it couldn't be, it could be somebody's.
So, we have a little canine interference, but we're going to try to focus.
So, that means then the dollars, Bruce, do we have the latitude? What I'm hearing is that we have some latitude to not totally discard what the monies were given for, that we requested, but it would, it could be justified that these dollars, we were going to be expanding work, or improving working conditions for not just the courthouse, but for law enforcement, and this is how we would do it?
That would be considered, I think, an edit.
And is that, is that legal? Feasible?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I would discourage that kind of an approach. I think, you know, I'm not an expert on MMB process. A lot of what I've, you know, worked on is helping other counties over the years, and sort of helping them with then matching and overall capital improvement planning and financial management planning. But I, it's my understanding that while you would have latitude to come up, you know, with a different solution as it relates to the courthouse, to the law enforcement center, and to, you know, quote "the justice center" and quote, you really wouldn't have the ability to take monies and use them for a highway facility or another county building unless that was part of the actual application. So, I recognize that, you know, some of the same principles and objectives would apply to all sorts of different county facilities, but I am pretty confident in saying that you would have to really focus on whatever specific sites are, you know, put in the application.
So, in other words, what we'd be doing is addressing the needs at the courthouse and at the law enforcement center?
That's my understanding, yes, and that seems compelling to me.
Okay. Commissioner Mills.
One other question, that's not super serious, and you don't have to answer, Bruce, and you can laugh it off, but have you ever been involved in bonding requests that have not succeeded?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, in bonding that did succeed or did not?
Did not.
Yeah, it's been a few years. Yeah, there was a request from a county that frankly had a pretty audacious request, and they were turned down. Funny story, though, I had a county, I had a city here in the Twin Cities, a city client that applied for some bonding dollars for infrastructure. It was sort of a unique situation, and they put in the request, it was only for, I think, $2 million. I mean, that's a lot of money, but, you know, not a huge amount. And they actually didn't realize that they had been awarded until like six months later, when I called them and said, "Hey, so what's your game plan with this bonding money you were awarded?" That was, but, you know, I know that you all be keeping your ear to the ground a little more closely than this city was, in any case.
Well, thank you, and, yeah, I was just wondering, just because, you know, we're, I maybe like to push the limits a little, and just, it sounds like you'd have learned from failures, though, or not failures, but, you know, requests that were turned down, and so I was just wondering just about that perspective, what, you know, because the dollars that we're talking about, relative to other counties and their projects, are pretty small, and so it just makes me wonder, but, yeah, I'm comfortable being laser-focused and kind of doing that larger option with the idea that we may not want to use the whole thing and scale things down, or...
Right. And Commissioner Mills, you know, again, I just want to reiterate, I'm not...
No, yeah.
I wish I, I wish I had better optics to give you a more definitive answer on what you had suggested about the big five. It just strikes me that, given the opportunity and given how popular it's going to be, I think you'll be better suited going with a sharper focus, but that's, you know, kind of my gut thinking on that.
Thank you, yeah.
Other questions for Bruce?
Commissioner White here. Bruce, since Cook County hasn't, like, forever requested money from the state in this, like this, do you know if we get extra points for being the first time to the table? I mean, like, oh, we should give them some money because they haven't asked before?
I know that's not anything official, but I wouldn't be surprised if there was something informal along those lines. With low-income housing tax credits, or LIHTC, that are administered through the State Housing Finance Agency, I know that there is some consideration of geographic distribution and where are places that have not been awarded tax credits before, or at least not recently, so from an equity perspective. That said, they also take into account population and population density, and of course, you're, you're, you know, not the strongest case on that front, but you certainly would be on the fact that you haven't been at the, you know, been making a request before. So, I think it's sort of a yes and no, but it certainly isn't going to hurt your case that you have, you haven't made this kind of a request in the recent past.
Good to know, thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Storley.
Thank you. Apologies for being late, I have had quite a few phone calls about this, so, already people are talking. So, has there been discussion to go above 8.7 million?
Not at this point. The recommendation was to keep a laser focus on the law enforcement center and the courthouse.
The, also to, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
If I might.
Please.
Sorry, I just jumped in. The other thing that we talked about with Bruce earlier was, you know, if we... The other thing that we talked about with Bruce earlier was, you know, if we, for example, if we thought it would be, if we would have a chance of success to include everything, all the deferred maintenance along with the 17.4, that would really tire our hands in terms of future bonding opportunities. And I think Bruce's advice was that we would do better to keep the amount where it is right now so that we don't, because there's a 50% match, and so we would have to be bonding that much more ourselves, which, you know, I mean, it's great to have a 50% contribution from the state if we get that, but it's still a lot of money that we have to match, so.
Thank you. All right. Other information that we need or other things to discuss?
So if we were to approve this and go forward focusing on law enforcement in the courthouse, do we have definitive plans that we? I mean, I know the Justice Center's the thing in mind, but do we have? What do we do then? Say we're awarded?
So we're going to be taking a number of steps. Next week at the Committee of the Whole, we're going to be meeting with Judge Cuso upstairs to talk about court services and to get his perspective, because he's been involved in the Carlton County project. And we haven't really, we haven't had a chance for you all to talk to those folks, and I think that's a really important part as a next step. And there, you know, I think, I think we also need to have additional, if we need to have special meetings to have further conversations. I really want to get this board to a place where you guys are comfortable with a course of action, and clearly we're not there yet. But I think there's more information that we can gather. I think taking this step today and getting in line for this substantial assistance from the state is a really positive step. It is going to reduce the burden that Cook County residents have to take on in terms of paying for the CIP. And, you know, as we've said several times today, if at some point in the future, whether it's before the October 13th deadline or even after we're awarded funding, if we need to make changes, we can do that.
But we can only make, I mean, we still have, I mean, the monies would be focused on law enforcement and?
That's correct.
The courthouse. I mean, that's it. It's not for?
That is correct, yeah. And I wasn't trying to suggest otherwise.
No, I was clarification. So we are, we are going to do a resolution asking for monies exclusively for the courthouse and for law enforcement?
That's the recommendation.
That's, and? How are we? Period. Question mark. How are we going to fix our buildings? Where does that money come from?
So that's something we are, we have a meeting with Bruce about the financial management plan, we'll be talking more about that. This is not like, we don't do this to the exclusion of doing all the other stuff. We still have to do that, right?
And we would, we would be doing that, like, starting before the roof goes, before the electrical wiring causes a fire or something, right? I mean, there aren't a lot of buildings that have critical, you know, that things need to be done, like, 2023, but we do have things that are identified that should be done in 2023. So will we be going forward with that?
We do, I mean, some of those smaller ticket items, yes. I mean, ones that are really critical, and we do have dollars in our fund balance or in our capital reserves to pay for some of those projects.
Brady, how much do we have in our capital reserves for fixing buildings?
Astor?
How about I get back to you next Tuesday to give you a good answer?
Kalista Hawkins. I first want to express my appreciation that we agreed to a recess today to rethink this. I think it was beneficial. It helped me have more confidence hearing it directly firsthand from Bruce, since, not that I didn't trust what you were reporting, but it just helps. And I get, really, we're looking at a lot of money, taxpayer dollars, for whichever plan we go with. And we would be bonding for it all on levy. This is an opportunity to get some maybe. We don't know. So I do appreciate the time. This is not an easy decision for us to make. But I guess I'm feeling right now more supportive. Let's see if the state's going to give us any. We're not signing on any dotted line yet, because guess what? That 8.7 million, if we get it, we still have to come up with 8.7 million ourselves before we can do anything. And we might say, no, we don't. It doesn't work with our financial management plan. I don't know, because I still haven't seen that.
Right.
So I guess I'm feeling better now about this, that I wanted to express my appreciation for giving me the time this afternoon and hearing Bruce Kimmel tell us himself his opinions.
I've not heard anyone, voters out there. Without a doubt, law enforcement needs some room. I mean, there's no, I mean, that's not a, there's a lot of questions about the courthouse and the whole, and moving for the Justice Center, moving all of that. There's a lot, and there's just questions everywhere, and there's data out there that needs to be shared, well, just even with the commissioners, so we can make some decisions. And so if it is kind of agreed or thought that we need to do something for law enforcement, I mean, you should not be eating lunch on the same table where you've been processing drugs or severed body parts, or whatever you have on that table. And then for storage for?
They don't actually do that, but?
They don't do the severed body parts in that room? Oh, okay. Well, wherever they do that. So they should have the space to do that. And so, so that would be one part of it, but I don't know. I mean, it would be getting money, in my mind, at this point, for the law enforcement to help with that building. And I'm still a long ways from thinking about the wisdom of moving everything over there, so Public Health and Human Services can have more space because?
So the focus today needs to be on this particular resolution?
Right.
And given our discussion, is there anyone who voted this morning, no, who would like to bring forward a motion to reconsider?
Madam Chair, before I do that, I just wanted to clarify that, and I don't mean to pick a fight here, it's just that our courthouse needs are the court, you know, HR, as well as PHHS. And I don't know why, but PHHS is really getting targeted a lot. And it's not just their needs, you know, the whole courthouse, and, you know, I hope it doesn't surprise any of us commissioners that we are responsible for all of the departments. And so before we get hypercritical on operations of a particular department, I think it might be beneficial to really learn a lot more, and I hope that that's actively pursued.
And that has been questions like, tell me more, tell me more, tell me more. And that is a question for the, that's been asked for the public, I mean, the public has asked, what are they doing?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we're not, it's not a criticism. The criticism is that there's not enough information, and I know, we're trying, but as we know, it's very difficult. So my question is, is the possibility of getting, getting monies for the law enforcement enough to carry my hesitancy? I mean, yes, we do need some more space, but I think we need to, we need time to talk about it, and we have to make this decision now.
And I think the idea of special meetings to further talk about the capital improvement plan and our financial management plan are going to be needed, clearly.
It is counterintuitive, but that discussion and, you know, there's aspects of that discussion that we have brought up with this discussion, and that's really important to help steer this, but that is a whole nother discussion. And this one, I think we've gotten cleared up that we're safe, we're not committed, you know, and as far as signing on the dotted line and all that. And so as one of the nave votes or the against votes before, I would like to make a motion to support a request to Minnesota Management and Budget for funding to support the implementation of the Cook County Capital Improvement Plan. And with the amendment from the resolution that's in our packet, and help me, please, Commissioner Sullivan, there was a wording switch or elimination in Paragraph Five.
An elimination of the Term Justice Center?
Well, I'm convert. We're not converting, right? So there was, you had something on your screen before, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have to pull that up.
This is the best, smoothest resolution ever.
And then it would be that and the elimination of Paragraph Six. On one.
What's the replacement for convert?
We are?
Eliminating Justice Center and? Too many emails. Oh, it's in send. All right. So we would strike, convert the Law Enforcement Center to a Justice Center through the addition of and add, reconfigure and add new space.
So Paragraph Five would read, whereas the capital improvement plan proposes to reconfigure and add new space that would include a courtroom, office spaces for court administration, probation, county attorney, meeting spaces for attorneys and clients, and new office, evidence storage and processing space for the sheriff's office, and a new Sally Port for transporting inmates in and out of the facility. And then we would eliminate Paragraph Six.
Correct.
Very messy motion. My apologies.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Mills?
I wanted to point out that in the motion, it does say new, so it says, reconfigure and add new space. So it can be interpreted many ways. As far as the adding of new space, we're not necessarily adding a new courtroom space, you know, that could be the reconfiguration. And so I feel like there's enough flexibility there for us not to be pigeonholed into anything there. As I was reading it, I started having doubts, but then, no, no, this is, I think, flexible, but.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I'm wondering how our administrator feels about that.
Good question.
I don't even know.
Okay.
Should we instruct you how to feel?
I mean, I work for you, so yes.
That's helpful.
No, I think that's, I think that's great.
Further discussion?
Wait, I don't have that one.
There's not been a motion to reconsider?
It's a resolution.
I did a different resolution.
He did a different resolution. Next page.
Do you want to prevail on that?
He was.
Thank you.
That's why I asked, wanted to make sure.
Thank you. That's.
Attention to detail.
We're getting rid of that?
We're getting rid of this one now. I highlighted my concerns. No, we're getting rid of this one. Other discussion?
Well, yeah, I can read it again if it's helpful, or I can type it for, or whatever. Is there something I can edit?
No, no, no.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second?
So, wait, no, read it again. So this would be, read it again for everyone else.
Commissioner, have you written it? I mean, have you typed it out?
No.
Okay.
I typed out.
All I need is this over and over again, and then I can, so whereas the cap, this is Paragraph Five, okay?
The highlighted one here.
Whereas the capital improvement plan proposes to reconfigure and add new space that would include a courtroom, office spaces for court administration, probation, and the county attorney meeting spaces for attorneys and clients, and new office, evidence storage and processing space for the sheriff's office, and a new Sally Port for transporting inmates in and out of the facility, and? And then eliminating the next paragraph. And so my discussion point right after the motion, or right after the support, was that a person could interpret it, like, kind of that knee-jerk when I was reading it, was like, adding courtroom? Wait, 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 that's pigeonholing, but that could be the reconfigure part, you know? So that's why I was like, this is? Does that sound like legit Attorney Hickon?
Because this says?
Legit-ish.
We've changed it now.
Yeah.
And, Madam Chair and Commissioners, number one, I am still here. Number two, I think Commissioner Mills's statement is good, you know, again, the big thing is you will have the ability to revise and refine between now and October, but it sounds like what Commissioner Mills has outlined, that sounds like it's plenty of direction for what Commissioner Yorki needs to do with the application.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion and a second. One more time, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. But we're not done yet.
I think we should be.
We have a few items. We first of all need to set a special meeting on June 20th in the judicial area of the courthouse to meet with Judge Cuso at 8:45. So would someone entertain a motion to do that? That would be a walkthrough with the judge.
Right. And if I could elaborate, the way next Tuesday is going to go, you will convene as the Board of Public Health at 8:30, as we normally do. It's going to be a very perfunctory meeting, basically just to get bills paid, then we're going to adjourn that, and then reconvene for the Committee of the Whole and go upstairs at 8:45 to meet with the judge and talk about court needs upstairs. And then we'll have additional Committee of the Whole agenda items that will follow that down here in the Commissioner's Room.
Congratulations, we served out.
And I would expect that that Committee of the Whole meeting will be a fairly long one, taking most, not all, of the morning, so.
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. So we have a motion for a special meeting next week on June 20th. Is there support?
Support?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Administrator?
Given that we're convening the Board of Appeals and Equalization in about three minutes, no.
All right. And I'm going to recommend that the rest of our agenda be tabled and be included in our next Commissioners' Meeting, our next County Board Meeting. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Administrator Yorki, is there anything of enough importance that we should reconvene again after our Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting?
There was one more thing that I wanted to brief you on, and that's a request from North Shore Waste to submit an application to MMB on their behalf for funding for the transfer station. One thing to know about that, MMB requires applicants to prioritize if they have more than one application. than one application, so, so we would prioritize, of course, the CIP. The other thing is their application would also require a resolution of support, which they would be asking for prior to October 13th. I wanted to get your resolution of support for the CIP, because I felt that it would enhance our chances of being considered. But I just wanted you to be aware that we've received that request and that I'm intending to assist them in getting an application in, because there's a community benefit to the project that they're doing. There are some questions about its eligibility, and there would need to be some kind of use agreement, I think, that we would have to execute to make it meet MMB's requirements, and that's...
Put an agreement that the county used the facility?
It would be, it would basically, I'm not sure exactly what the parameters of that would be, and that's something that we still have to work out. But I think, you know, I think it is in the community's interest for us to support this application with the understanding that it's not going to supersede the, the CIP application. So that's all I really have.
All right. Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned, and our assessor has a couple of minutes to set up. Thank you, Bruce. We appreciate your work with us today.
Absolutely.